Does everybody have the package of the annual report and the measurement report? Because I don't have that.
Nope.
Oh, I thought that was for the properties.
Hey, I dropped it off in your office. I didn't give it to you. Do you have it?
I thought it's...
Mayor, do you have it?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought that was for the...
So, the measurement report is included at that. Call to order disconnect the Urban Renewal Agency. First item is the approval of the January 17 minutes. Approved by Mr. Palomini, signed by Mr. Mutoveron. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution's passed with two absents. Next item is the resolution for seventeen dash zero two, appointment of a contracting officer. What I'm recommending to you tonight is Steve Strickland has done this before. It's really a paper position. Ordinate was going to put Rachel Ward in that position. She's handling real estate sales. And we're using her at this point really just to move real estate into the agency for holding purposes and then moving it back out where the actions are either occurring by the city or other agencies that we transfer it to. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to designate Rachel Ward as the appointing officer by Karen Zulinski-Wolzounis, seconded by Mr. Palomini. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the annual report is attached here with the sale of properties. Would entertain a motion for that. Mr. Palomini, seconded by Mr. Mutoveron. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I do not have a copy of the measurement report, so we will hold that for our next meeting. Any other business that come before the agency? I entertain a motion to adjourn with Mr. Palomini, Zulinski-Wolzounis. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agency's being adjourned.
Okay, I will call to order the Finance Committee. And our first item is the acceptance of a $25,000 grant for the New York State Department of State. Commissioner Farrar.
Hi, the President, Council, Mayor. The Department of State of the State of New York has granted the City of Schenectady a $25,000 grant. And this grant will be used for a youth bill program. And this program is to provide men and women ages of eighteen to twenty-four with work experience by assisting low and moderate income homeowners with small repairs to maintain their homes and code compliance on their problems. This account will be used through the grant fund of M D four.
Questions?
Nothing.
Moved by Ms. Zulinski-Wolzounis.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mutoveron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And the 2017 budget reappropriation for code support.
Yes, UCU colleges has a large construction project going on at its properties. And the situation is the code department, they like utilize an outside consulting firm to accomplish certain plan reviews and inspections. We, as you remember, we have done something like this on law card for chase. We're looking, the city's looking to receive about 130,000 ability permit fees. What we want to do is appropriate eighty, excuse me, 68,000 to the cost of these fees. So we plan to increase revenue in that code billing and permit fee by 68,000 and then increasing the expense for code, fees for services by 68,000.
Questions?
I'll move this.
Moved by Mr. Mutoveron, seconded by Ms. Zulinski-Wolzounis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Next, we were, we're on to the presentation of the 2017-18 proposed action and public hearing. Mr. Eepman. I'm sorry? Sure? Yes, public.
Great, the board this is on.
I couldn't see it. Small print.
So we're here to present today the 2017-2018 proposed annual action plan from the Department of Development. The annual action plan, the City of Schenectady has participated jurisdictions and seen the annual allocation of federal funding to the community development block grants program, C D V G, the home investment partnership program, Home, and the emergency solutions program, E S P G. In the annual plan, excuse me, outlines the proposed allocations by activities to the federal fiscal year 2017 through 18 funding. And the allocations and use of these funds are predicated on the following national objectives for low and moderate income persons to aid in prevention of or elimination of slums or flights to meet community development needs having a particular residency. So these are outcomes and growth. Just the outcome, the City of Schenectady's neighborhoods are providing private communities for residents and businesses are afforded valuable opportunities to improve their quality of life. So the anticipated available funding, the community development block grant or the C D V G, we have 2.1 billion or 2,67,628 dollars. For the emergency solutions grants, we have 185,888 dollars. And for the home investment partnerships or homes, we have 457,457 dollars for total, for total funds to be allocated or available funding of 2,710,970 dollars. The proposed allocations were changed based on the passage, passing of the federal, 2018 federal budget. Many of you might be aware that President Donald Trump in his budget introduction has called for the elimination of community block grants, of cost savings according to the budget of three, three billion dollars. So the difference in funding, as you can see in 2014 and 2017, there was a bit of a difference, slight difference between 2016 and 2017. Simply because now, instead of, it was the 357,000 in 2016, we had to pay 100,000 dollars back to the City of Troy. Now, if we were to get this appropriation, we won't have to pay that based off of the ten-year payment being complete. So we actually had the full, the full 457,000 dollars. So we propose an economic development of the community loan fund of the capital region. We propose $30,000, which is the same amount that proposed last year. And our emergency solution grants, we propose funding for the better house, for the E S P G of 36,000, and for the C B G of 15,000. These are a very, rest of our proposals for emergency solution. Then, yes. For housing assistance, we propose for the better house, better neighborhoods, community land trust, Habitat for Humanity, and Schenectady Housing Development Program for total funding of, for emergency, for homes, housing assistance. Sorry, for, for total funding, huh?
Is that the 457?
Yeah, 456. Thank you. So, all right, next is for public service. We have this part in part one and part two. These are the organizations that we proposed for a total of 304,994. Part two. We also have about four new programs under this section. We have Big Brothers for their co-op extension, Kingsway, My Side. For total new funding for that will be about 38,500. So we want to highlight that. Then, next, for Public Works, we are recommending this for total funding of 1.3 million or 1.2. And then our next one for administration is our total funding of for about 473,000. And this is the administration for some of the things that we do in-house. So we now have the Department of Development, Department of Finance, Department of Law. So our community comments and public hearing, we have a thirty day comment period from April 4th, 2017 to May 3rd, 2017. Regular comments can be submitted to the Department of Development. We await your, eager to await your, your response. And then to give your appropriate response. We have a public hearing on April 24th, 2017. Room in two Q nine at 7:00 PM is the regular city council meeting. So if you need any more information, my contact is on the board. I am currently the Deputy Commissioner of Finance. And if you'd be ready to contact me via phone or email for any comments or feedback. Thank you. And now, please.
Okay, so historically, we've had a spreadsheet that's shown us the prior year, what was funded, what's being funded this year as a basis of comparison.
Okay.
I assume that will...
Yes.
And I can clarify with the, you know, example of that if it's not readily available.
We...
But I think that's important. And then also, you know, what was funded last year may not be funded this year and...
Okay.
Questions?
Can that sheet be emailed to us?
Yes.
President, one thing, I just have to put additional emphasis on, courtesy of his initial remarks where it's the President's budget eliminates all, it's usually where debating of how minor changes and adjustments to balance the community needs, which we will still do in this process. But bottom line is, if that prevailed, there will be no money in this at all.
But to pass a proposed, we need that information, right? And then we'll find out when it...
And we will, that summary is there.
Yes.
And we'll cross our fingers and hope and pray that that's not the circumstance because that would be great loss to many of our very important non-prosecute businesses.
Yes.
Other questions or comments?
You're just moving for a public hearing?
Yes. Yep.
I'll move this.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Mutoveron, seconded by Ms. Zulinski-Wolzounis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your presentation. I think you're up next, too. Accept the grant from the New York State slated to flood mitigation.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Trying to catch my buddy. So, there was a city, Schenectady, has received grant funding from the New York State Office of Parks and Historic Preservation in the amount of 22,000 dollars. The contract is for the stockade, storage, district elevation design guidelines for flood mitigation. There will be an in-kind match of about 13,662 dollars in the backup support staff and the revenue expenditures will go through the grant funding now. Six. That's good.
I'll move this.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And just before we close, Finance, a great newspaper the other day that UCU colleges likely to bond their new project through the county. And along with that agreement, should be accepted by the county, is 250,000 dollars to the City of Schenectady. So it will be coming back to the council. I've heard that is going to be settled in April. So it will be coming back to council with a suggestion that we reserve that for direct taxing in the 2018 budget cycle. So just as a placeholder, a good thing, a positive thing for the city and hopefully it's the start of a beautiful relationship. And that, is there anything else to come before Finance?
Absolutely, sure.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Zulinski-Wolzounis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. And I will ask Mr. Mutoveron, overseeing Health and Recreation in the absence of Ms. Porterfield.
Call to order Health and Rank. And first item is a contract for the fertilizers and pesticide for the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course. Mr. Richard, are you gonna?
He's here. The summary is in your packet. This is the annual award for these chemicals and supplies. I ask the council's favor to take consideration.
Any question?
I ask one more, sir.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course Golf Cart Fee. Mr. Bailey.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you.
So, the increase, we're looking for increase for all cart rentals for $1 for nine holes and eighteen holes. And we did purchase a new fleet of golf carts this year. In your patent, that little pamphlet I just gave you, you'll see that's the model that we did go with was from Yamaha. An excellent choice, I think we made. The color that you see is not the color of the cart itself. We went with a color called sandstone, more of a beige, tannish color. Definitely looks more, definitely more professional looking. Some of the amenities that we have on the carts include, they have windshield in the front, rain guards on the back for people with their gloves and when it rains. Sand bottles to help replace divots on the golf course. They're fuel injected, which is also nice. So the players, one of the main complaints they get is they hit the gas pedal between the chug, chug, chug. They don't move yet, have that chugging mechanism. They don't have to do that anymore. Hit the gas, goes. None of that stalling out. And they also have GPS equipped this year, which you'll see on the last page of that little pamphlet I gave you. Now, most golf courses in the area don't have these. The only one that is around that's open to the public that does have this is Saratoga National. Couple of the private clubs have moved to this, in this direction, but we'll be the first municipal that has it.
That can track the ball that goes into woods?
Yeah, exactly. The nice thing about having this GPS is two things. Number one, it helps the player on the golf course, more knowledge to help them with their game. Number two, it helps us track movements on the golf. So if somebody's driving where they're not supposed to be, we can see these movements on our own screen in the golf shop. So with all these new amenities we have, this increase will uncover all the associated costs that have gone up this year as well. I think it's important to look at this as, we're not going to be more expensive than other golf courses in the area. I did some research on this. We will still be either even or less than most of the other public golf courses. So it won't elevate us so high that people will say, well, we're not going to go there that's too expensive. That was very important.
I thought it was one of my questions to the other.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Sure.
Just one word choice, a clarification there. We're not purchasing these, we're leasing them. We went through the cost benefit analysis and the carts we had in place were leased. And so that is expired, facilitating the, bringing in the new fleet of vehicles.
Yep, we expect the end of this week.
So that answered my question, I think. So we're replacing a whole fleet?
Yeah, yeah. Last year, they were on the, at the end of the lease, it was a six-year lease. And they definitely saw their age.
How many, how many carts do you have?
Sixty-two.
So that's enough for a large tournament, then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Good to backfill, please, right?
Yeah.
Please throw a jettison mark. Are we going to have to blow seventy down the hill?
No.
Oh, okay.
Seven and a half. And there's two, when you say the whole fleet, there's not two, there's two utility...
Yeah, they're marked.
Or maybe a package, but all the ones that the golfer choose, yes. Some other ones, of course, are off-cycle for this purchase.
Any other question? I ask for a motion.
One second.
You're not in the committee.
Oh. But I want to move it, I'm excited.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Bailey, I'm sorry.
Any, go ahead.
Yeah, before you go. And recently, this brought to my attention that there was a pretty significant flood in the clubhouse.
Yes.
And we hadn't, I, I wasn't aware of that.
Okay.
So at this point, where does that stand? Do you need repairs? Do you need council assistance and moving, would, would, can you give us an update on what happened? Where we are?
It was, it was March 5th, and I had gotten a phone call from our golf committee chairman at the time, Don Cloud, that there was a pipe break, whether it was a freeze or whatever. And it actually was from the sprinkler system. And I came up there and the water was just pouring out of the, out of the ceiling. Shortly after I got there, Mary McCarthy arrives. And so we were sitting there watching this water pour out, kind of helpless. And then the water department showed up, they turned it off. But the damage was done. Inside the bar, it was probably a good four inches of standing water, wouldn't you agree? It was pretty high. I was trying to find an exit wherever I could. And it penetrated pretty far into the dining room. The bar was completely saturated with water, the walls, the floor. Mr. Legere is here right now, Ray Legere, and his group has done an amazing job to turn that place around. You know, I've been associated with this golf course for over thirty years, either as a player or a staff member. And I got to tell you, this is going to be something that any patron that comes there will be proud of. It's absolutely magnificent. So, Mr. Legere, thank you, because it's, it's fabulous. You won't even recognize when you come in there, that's how nice of it. You think you've walked in somewhere else. So, yep, things are moving on a very good timeline. And I expect that we'll be completed with that by the time we open, we hope, May 12, 13.
May 12.
April, sorry, April 12, 13.
April.
April.
We'll get a heart attack.
Sorry, Anthony.
He's mentioning your revenue. There goes my revenue.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Any other business for Health and Rank? Maybe close already, once you close. You're out. Was? No. Mr. Riggi?
I'll make them up.
Can I have a motion closed? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Call to order Public Safety. And first item is Mohawk Ambulance Contract Renewal.
It's right here.
Mr. Palatico, do we have to take this in executive session? It's the contract?
You don't have to. From contract negotiation, you're allowed to.
Contract basically is a renewal, but contract. This is for more?
I'm putting forth a contract for the approval of the council. If there are some questions that come up that might warrant executive session, we could move appropriately. If not, we could just handle the whole thing in public session.
Okay.
Well, last time I handled it in public session. Basically, a contract renewal. It's not a new contract by any means. Mohawk handle is, as most people know, they supply the, this, the, here in the city. It's again, a contract that we've had for several years. It's due on every three-year cycle. We've made no changes to the contract other than basic dates, minor changes, as of... So again, we use Mohawk handle for the current four years. And I think here, we have a pre-relationship with them, it's a city-run business. And it's a contract renewal. It's, it's not a new contract by any means. You have any answering questions that you have in the contract that we use Mohawk exclusively? And we don't have.
This is a renewal for the next three years?
Next three years of your contract, starting now.
Any question?
Contract on a three-year cycle that you have for renewal this year.
Call for motion?
There's also representatives of Mohawk here who want to ask real questions.
I think a standard is just, you know, renewal, nothing has changed, so, you know.
I'll move it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
I just wanted to add that although Legere did a decent job over there for him, we're kicking off the whole project.
Compliments.
As always, thank you.
You got left out of that one.
I knew. Any other business for public safety? I ask for motion.
Oh, sorry, I can move it.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
I'd like to open Public Service and Utilities. And Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. This is, what you have in front of you is a master agreement with the New York State DOT for the Erie Boulevard Payment Preservation Project. That will be beginning the next couple of months on Erie Boulevard between Union Street and the new Roundabout. So one clarification I just want to make sure that I make is on your legislative book, just to make sure. It talks about the federal funding, 1.517, that is correct. However, if you notice in your agreement, there also is considerable local share comprised of both borrowed funds from the previous Erie Boulevard project and sewer money. And we're going to be making comparisons to the sewer lines. So the total value of the project's actually five million dollars, not 1.5. So it's a large local share, reason being that we're in a era where the federal government does not contribute as much money. We were fortunate to have leftover borrow proceeds, previous capital project, but we did not have to bond any new money. We also have the sewer money. We're working on the water line right now. So Department of Transportation is letting us fast-track this, which is why you're seeing a master agreement before we actually have bid going, because they want to keep everything kind of working on an expedited process for us, so that we can make sure that we get this work completed.
Questions? Questions? You spoke a good job.
Yep, there are a lot of people who are going to board the project.
I don't get a motion.
Just have a question. So let me just recap for you. So the total project is five million dollars?
Yes.
And 1.5 million is coming?
That's the federal money that.
Federal money?
Yes.
And the balance is coming from?
Both the existing capital funds that we had borrowed for the previous and from the sanitary sewer we're using. We're going to be turned in place lining all the sanitary lines and any storm lines. So we've been doing a lot of work out there at night that you haven't been seeing, both sanitary and water. So right now, we're doing the water, hoping to have the water line done in two months. And right when the water line is done, we can have the contractor ready, both flies, start doing the street skate. Just for your information, too, this project is going to go knock on the little scooters and the others, because this is not a road reconstruction. This is a mill. So we're not going down 24 inches. Money does not exist anymore for that kind of reconstruction. So what we're going to be doing primarily, you're going to see curved the sidewalks, the smart lighting LEDs. We're going to have some traffic calming out there, new signals. All those things are more surface style improvements. We really don't have the budget to be able to go into what did, that was a $10 million project previously. So that type of federal money just doesn't exist anymore. So that's what this is, a pavement preservation project.
Good. How long is this for?
We're anticipating it's going to start in June and go right through October.
We're going to reline the sanitary line?
Yes.
Okay. I don't get a motion. Is that Mr. Regge? Oh.
See, that's.
One second. It's not here. All those in favor, aye? Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Next up is dumpsters and residential neighborhoods, Mr. Regge.
This is an issue that's, actually, it's one dumpster, there's a couple of them. But it's not covered in city code, maybe. It's, dumpsters are covered in commercial zone areas, but not residential, I believe, they're not, as far as being screened off and where they can be placed. So it's been an issue. And there's an issue on Fifth Avenue, one that's been, it's there, it's not there. They've been cited, because during the research, it's covered in the waste collection, it's covered. Where waste supervisor can look at and say, it's not appropriate for it to be here. So what's happening, and I talked to Dominic this afternoon. I think somebody from code went there and talked to me. This may ongoing for probably eight months now. Somebody from code went there and talked to the person. They did move it to the rear of the property. But from what Dominic told me, the guy wants to park there. So he drags it out and puts it on the side of Fifth Avenue. We're almost, it's almost in the city right away, but it's not. And then he parks his car where the dumpster should be. So this is ongoing, but it's not covered in code as far as a zoning issue where it should be screened off. And it seems like it should be screened off. And there's one in Bellevue, too, on the corner of Third and Broadway. There's one that's right on the corner that's usually a mess. And the lady next door is complaining because it smouts, you know? That's the other reason. I'll talk about this. So I don't know if something you want to consider for a zoning change with dumpsters and residential neighborhoods, because it seems kind of crazy that it isn't called, have a dumpster in the residential area. I don't know, maybe if law can take a look at it and see if there's any, if it is there. I can't find, when I talked to Christine, she said it's not there. And it looks like it isn't there. It's only in, in commercial zoned areas, dumpster rules. So just something I think we maybe should discuss and think about.
Okay.
At least it's got a.
Um, I'm sorry, good.
So just for clarification, because this came up during legislative conference, you're talking about actual dumpsters, not roll-offs, right?
Right.
Like not a temporary, where somebody was doing, you know, leaving out of their house?
They're dumpsters for trash.
And is this?
It's too bad it's not more advantageous for the city to do this, too. You know, to opt for the service.
Is it just as easy as adding the word "commercial and residentially zoned areas" with public hearing and be done with that? I mean, it makes sense to me. Why shouldn't they be regulators, especially in residential areas?
Yeah, I, it would be just that easy, but what I'd like is, give me a chance. I'll check out the code, see, make sure that there's nothing already on the books in some section that covers this instance. And I can come back to recommendation and discuss with the mayor a little bit. I don't know, but it'd be easy to sort of.
Is it efficient to call for a public hearing tonight and then we can pull it if we need to?
Certainly an option.
I don't know how the rest of the council feel about it.
They'll follow it this week.
All right. So then, if we could, if we could move forward with that, and we'll call for a public hearing. And if need be, we'll, we'll not do it if we can't find the appropriate language. All right.
Yeah, because it takes a couple of slides.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. Hardly, there's one missing. Turns everybody off. Can I have a motion closed, public?
I move, we adjourn.
I'll second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. And a call to order, government operations. The first item is the Permanent Action Advisory Board, Mayor McCarthy.
To the, from your, Christine Parsons. I would ask your favorable consideration.
Is there a resume for Ms. Parsons, or?
Just a reappointment? Yes, I don't know if that's.
So we had, we didn't receive that. Can we, can you just give us some information on?
Get a resume for the one, I believe she's a reappointed. Or shoot for the other factor.
Can we just get a little more information? And now am I passing it out to committee or, you know, wait?
I'll move it.
But are you sufficient with the resume? Do you want her here Monday night?
No, I think a resume and just let us know whether it's a reappointment or not would be fine.
I still move. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next is a ceremonial resolution for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. There's some information in your packet. It is also in conjunction with, well, they'll be coming to the council maybe, but also having an event on December 11th. So we need a motion for that.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next is a ceremonial resolution for the 90th anniversary of Schenectady Light Apple Company.
Pretty self-explanatory. They just had their 90th anniversary and their gala. And this would recognize them for 90 years within Schenectady.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next is actually not a discussion, it's really just an announcement, because we're missing two council members tonight. I wanted to update our citizens that have been coming to the rail that the majority of the council now would like to discuss this. I know that Mr. Palamene, Ms. Luski Wodzynas, Mr. Uteverin, and Mr. Posher worked on something they proposed that will be brought to the table in two weeks. I know Ms. Porterfield also has some proposed language to bring to the table. And I also, so the only reason I'm putting this out is I feel like it's important for the entire council to be at the table for this discussion. And we are missing two of our members this week. So I want to let the citizens know that we will, we will be discussing it on the April 17th agenda.
Well, I would like to just pass these out. I mean, everybody's got a copy of this via email.
Yep, you're welcome to pass it out, but we just won't be discussing it this evening.
Well, you're the one that's brought it up at the last two council meetings. And we're not asking for a vote. Marion will still be able to discuss it when she gets there.
It's on the agenda for discussion tonight, but I appreciate that.
But there were four people who asked for it to be on agenda.
I understand.
Well, just making it clear for people, let them know that you're not letting it discussed.
At the table. Uh, no, it's not that I'm not letting it discussed, be discussed.
Sure it is.
Mr. Palamene, I called for a discussion for several.
And you could have put it on the agenda at any point, and you didn't.
If the majority of the council doesn't want to discuss it, there's really no sense in having that on the agenda.
No, you asked that there was support for sanctuary city status, which there is not.
I'm quoted as the super of actually asking for discussion all the way across the board for all of the opportunities or all the possibilities that the council might consider.
And you asked, you asked if there was support for sanctuary city status, which there was not. Here we come with a discussion item and you don't want to discuss it. Yet you keep, you want to play it both sides, that's fine. But let's just make it publicly aware.
Mr. Palamene, let me make it clear to you that I'm not playing both sides. I think all of us should be at the table for this discussion. And at the top of the agenda that you'll see that I reserved right to add or delete any agenda item, this is my decision that I will make publicly, that I want all of us here to discuss it.
That's fine, you're just making it aware that this has been brought forward and you have not allowed it to be discussed.
On to ceremonial street naming of the section of North J Street.
Just before you proceed. So we're going to add immigration support on the next cycle?
Yes.
No, what do you mean by immigration support?
I, this, we're going to talk about all the possibilities that people would like to bring to the table, including your resolution, including Ms. Porterfield's wording, including any other examples that would like to be brought to the table. And we'll come to consensus as to what the council, as the majority, might feel comfortable with going forward. And it'll be a collective decision with everybody present. As it always has been recommended and presented. So on to ceremonial street naming of the section of North J Street. A lot of citizens out there have done a lot of very hard work to collect a lot of signatures. And we have one of them here this evening. And we have a letter here from Mr. Laraman. And they're proposing that they do a renaming of the, a ceremonial renaming of a portion of North J for Diamond. And they have submitted, I believe, 1,000 signatures in all?
Two.
2,000? Excellent work. Good for you. Certainly is an indication of how important this is to people. So thank you for all your hard work. And we do need to, in accordance with the legislation, call for a public hearing. So that's why this is on the agenda this evening. So if I can have a motion, call for a public hearing. Move by Ms. Luski Wodzynas, second to right, Mr. Palamene. All those in favor? Thank you. And thank you. It means that not this Monday, but in two weeks from this, next Monday, we'll have a public hearing where people can come and speak on whether they support it or whether they don't. And the council will take that information. So it's just part of the process. And you can't actually have any back and forth conversation during this meeting, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. My contact information's on the website or if you're going to be here later. Is your contact information on in those letters? Okay, I'll reach out to you. All right, thank you. Okay, on to the zoning change request from parcels on Erie Boulevard. And that is Mr. Eaton. We're really putting you through the paces tonight.
Thank you. Again, that before you, Department of Development has received a request to change the zoning of several parcels on Erie Boulevard. The request is being made to allow for future development that is not permitted by the current zoning designation property. The current zoning of the property is C4, downtown commercial district. The proposed zoning is a C3 waterfront mixed-use district.
Questions? Yes, Mr. Regge?
It's come to my attention, this, what must be for the zoning board for variance? What, what did the zoning board deny?
I do not know.
I can answer your question. The zoning board denied a variance for restriction on having a drive-through venue at that location. And it's a four-prong test you have to meet in order to run in a variance in that situation. One of the prongs is show that it's going to be a financial hardship where you're not going to get a reasonable return on your property. And that's a really hard prong to me, because it's hard to show what, what you'd be doing with a property without getting that variance, what you can do with it, or things like that. So that's why the zoning board may be adjusting on that, but that doesn't mean that we're not supporting the overall project there.
Ms. Luski Wodzynas?
So if we change declassification, this will allow them to move forward with their development project?
It would still need to be reviewed by the planning commission for a special use permit. So just doing this doesn't allow to have, but it'd be the same zoning that they have right next door at Mohawk Harborside. So they'd go through the same process as somebody, you know, right across the street.
So just for classification, this is adjacent to the Mohawk project?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Palamene?
Literally like 50 feet.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's.
Yeah. You throw it strong, that one.
I just want to let everybody know.
Yeah. And this wouldn't, this wouldn't interfere with any neighborhoods, right?
I personally don't think so.
Right. Well, I'm looking at the map, I just wanted your legal opinion. So, yeah, this makes sense, total sense to do.
Mr. Palatico, are there any businesses under this particular zoning code that might not necessarily fit in this, in that area for any reason that the, that the council should consider?
Off the top of my head, I don't know of any, but what I can tell you is, the first step here is this gets referred to the planning commission. So the planning commission has to review it. If they have concerns, they'll raise them and they'll make a recommendation to the council. And if they're not, you should support this. It's the same process that we went through when we rezoned the Mohawk Harbor back in, I think, 2015. So, so if you're not deciding right now to accept it or not, it's just refer to them for a recommendation.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. Move by Mr. Palamene, accepted by Ms. Luski Wodzynas. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we're on to the, I believe, same type of zoning change request for parcels on Macs and Road.
Yes. The Department of Development has received another request for change of zoning of three parcels back on Road. The request is made to allow future development that is not permitted by the current zoning designation of these properties. The current zoning of the properties is an M1 light manufacturing and warehouse district and M2 manufacturing and warehouse district. The proposed zoning is a C3 mixed, waterfront mixed-use district.
Questions on this one?
We'll move it.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next up is parkland alienation in Quackenbush Park. I don't believe Mr. Trump is here, I'm not sure he's going to speak for this.
I can address this. This is, if people are familiar with Quackenbush Park, between Pleasant Middle School, Park Street goes over. The Boys and Girls Club is looking to put a new facility and enjoy that new parking lot where Quackenbush Park is, where you went earlier, Pleasant Middle School. Because it's designated parkland, we're looking to carve out a small portion and have that alienated and required action by the state legislature. This is a, I think it's a really great project by the Boys and Girls Club, working in conjunction with the school district. And also where they manage our swim program in the park during the summer. State legislature historically requires when you alienate some parkland that you create an equal amount or greater someplace else. And we're looking to do that in the area of Liberty Park on State Street, Washington Avenue. So that's where we're realigning this to allow the Boys and Girls Club to have site control and put up their building. Public, I don't think it's really going to notice any change in terms of the park or the school. But it will meet the technical requirements. Work is being done on Lower State Street, Washington Avenue.
And it's my understanding that the pool stays intact, the playground stays intact?
Yes.
All of that will stay just as it is?
Exactly.
Questions?
There may be some modifications or improvements with access and sidewalks and appropriate landscape.
Mr. Regge?
With the conversion, if the conversion's necessary, is it, was there ever any federal, federal money to Quackenbush that you know? Because I think that's where conversion is required. And if it's going to happen anyhow, that's fine, that might be required.
Don't believe so. But it's, I don't know. But, because, I don't know if it's gone back into the sixties, stuff, or.
Yeah, if there's some, or any federal ground funding.
Even though there's, some of those expire after a certain amount of time, something, you know, fifty years ago.
Because I think that's where conversion is required, from my recollection of alienation.
Well, some of it is correct, but sometimes the state legislature just is.
They'll require it.
Right, just this standard procedure to preserve equal amount of parkland with the state.
Other questions? Very exciting project ahead of us, so, this is good thing, I'll move for motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Ms. Muskiwazunas, seconded by Mr. Palamene, all those in favor? Aye. And I believe the rest of the agenda is executive session, Mr. Palatico.
That is correct.
All right, so I will ask for a motion to go into executive session. Moved by Ms. Muskiwazunas, seconded by Mr. Palamene, and we are in executive session.